School Board, it's Monday, August 21st. We are in the new facility. We have a new school representative, welcome. Do you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Anna Choos, I'm a senior at the school.
Welcome Anna.
Thank you for being a risk taker and willing to sit in on how school operates. So, thank you for agreeing to do that. You didn't tell me what really went on there, did you?
Good, uh, let's start with a roll call, please.
Valerie Howe, here. Joyce Iverson, here. Julie Coe, here. John Linder, here. Dean Mero, here. John Pettit, here. Bonnie Princeton, here. Anna Choos, here.
Great, thanks. Alright, adoption of the agenda. We have, um, comments on the agenda, sir?
I have no additional items to add. I'm the head of the board myself, so it is as it is.
Would this be an opportunity to amend an agenda item?
Certainly.
So number two, approve the hire of Tom Vicks as a co-head coach.
What's your...
I just think it'd be best for both sides, actually. Chris Drinkle, I haven't talked to him, he thinks it's, uh, it would definitely work. And it'd be for one year for Tom to come back.
Okay, so that's already on the agenda, so.
Correct. Just maybe just, uh, as a co-head coach, so there'd be two head coaches.
So he's asking you to amend that?
Oh, I see, okay.
That's the agenda item.
Wouldn't that just be part of the discussion of that item?
I would caution you on doing that, because your agenda item is carried over from the past board meeting. I welcome Bean to bring that forward during that discussion, but to change that agenda item, to reflect that.
Yeah, we can address that when we get there, I guess.
Okay.
Anything else on the, uh, the agenda? Not look for a motion to approve?
We're gonna make that motion.
Second?
First and second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close vote, sure. Sorry, can't read the signature, oh, great, Smith, alright. What would you like to address, Mr. Smith?
Sign your fine, or you can stand, or, signatures fine? I just wanted to say, uh, thank the board for everything you're doing. I was a little frustrated, we just had one of the grandest days of the Rushford Peterson High School District, and I didn't see everybody's face there. You are the leaders of the community, the community looks up to you guys as leaders for all this, all the public out here, and we need all of you on board for what happened here and what's gonna happen with this new school. I just think for the betterment of the whole public, we need all of you to rally together and show in the public total support for what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, there are, first, there's the regular board meeting minutes, spoken on pages three to five, last month. August donations in the amount of ten thousand and fifty dollars, located on page six. July hand payables, wires and payroll liabilities in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents, on pages seven and eight. July payroll in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. August board bills in the amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty cents, and it's located on pages nine through fourteen. And then a couple personnel issues, the hire of Kimberly King, point eight-two, E.L., E.L. teacher, and the resignation of Mike Homkin as head golf coach. Any discussion on any of that, in the comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to comment that whoever's responsible, students and staff, for that ten thousand contribution from the middle school student council, they should be commended. That's a tremendous skill.
Okay, any other comments?
I also think it's appropriate time to just thank Mr. Homkin for his many years of leading the golf team, and he's done a great job.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, knowing he has done a great job. Hopefully we can find somebody in the next few months.
Don't forget, don't be helping wrong.
Any other comments, or otherwise look for a motion to approve, the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, I have your solution.
Second?
I'll second.
Close vote. Any ones in favor of approving the consent agendas, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close vote. Carries. Moving on to own business, first, approve the second reading on DOT policy five thirty-four, unpaid meal charges, which is closed. Anybody have a comment on that?
We had the first reading last month, and again, that's just setting the stipulations about, uh, policies in regards to lunch accounts that have the tendency to get some up large on us, and so informing families that there is a policy in place, making them aware of it, so it does give us some, um, foundation to work off of, when we address that with families.
Any comments, or look for a motion to approve?
This policy must be, uh, come up at this time in all school districts, because there's an awful lot of it on the news and in the papers about, and it seems like they're struggling with the same things we are with unpaid and trying to keep the kids out of parents and guardians business. It's not their fault, so I'm just wondering if it comes up with a certain time of year with, or through MSBA, or would this coincide?
Uh, it's a combination of things, Steve, it's just a matter of schools. This one has been revised by MSBA, and so that's why it's a little bit on the forefront.
Yeah, I was thinking I commented before, you know, if there was federal funding or state funding, so everybody got a opinion, but I mean, I know there's process involved.
Again, in the summer.
Right, now, but that's another issue some other day, so. Look for a motion to approve?
First and make a motion. Second.
Second. Any further comments? All those in favor of approving item one, the second reading, on DOT policy five thirty-four, unpaid meal charges, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close vote. Carries. And item two of own business, approve the hire of Tom Vicks, varsity boys' basketball coach, which was tabled at our last meeting. Most of us or all of us should have seen some email traffic on that issue, and, uh...
Just to remind the board that I, hopefully you did see the email I sent out that was sent to me by Chris Drinkle, Chris removed his, uh, letter of application, and so I did forward that out to all of you as board members, so hopefully you're aware of that as well.
Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, some guys alluded to it earlier, so obviously Tom is, you know, a great coach, a good asset to communicate with the community, extremely dedicated, um, you know, the last board meeting, I think I was just a little frustrated in how the process went down. Chris is doing a good job. He ran the summer program as the, as the head coach, to be the acting head coach in Tom's absence when he was teaching, he's from the road, I think it just makes sense to have two co-head coaches, if you will, or co-head coaching position. It's win-win for everybody.
Does that fit in with Mr. Drinkle's, you know, pulling back, what was your...
He indicated to me he would, he'd be okay with a co-head coach.
I have to say, it was a really interesting meeting to miss. Because again, trying to read about it, I mean, I learned about most of what was said just reading it in the paper, um, you know, I guess, it seems unfortunate to me that I think because of how it all went down, it's become sort of a public discussion of Chris versus Tom, and I really feel for both of them, so I don't think they really deserve that, and I think, you know, part of the issue might be that as a board, and again, I wasn't there reading it, our job is to really, to either approve or not approve of the administration's recommendation, and certainly we cannot approve it, I mean, that's our job, if there's something we don't approve of, we can do that, but I'm really uncomfortable with, with, I guess, the level of board involvement, you know, because all, whatever one of us does reflects on everybody, and I gotta tell you, I don't want to make you mad at me, but I got really nervous the other week, and he said, "Well, I've been meeting with Chris, and he'll do it."
I didn't say I'm not with Chris.
Then you said you talked to him.
I said I communicated with him, I'm valid.
Well, okay, communicated with him, I guess, I wouldn't, if, they both, both of them.
I had to make sure he was alright before I made this motion.
Well, see, and I guess, and it's just my opinion, but I think that's board overreach, and it concerns me, and I have to say that.
I think as a board, I have every opportunity to negotiate with whoever I want, talk to who I want, I mean, I'm here representing the people that voted in.
So you can, I mean, you wanna assist with other hires too, or?
Quite.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully say to you as a board, that as your administrator, that when I meet with my principals, or I meet with Mr. Bebedor, we bring you a recommendation. If you're not happy with that recommendation, then I would invite you as board members to let us know all that, and not to have behind-the-scenes negotiations going on, private conversations, that isn't your role as board members, I'll just tell you that right up front, because you know, that is, that's gonna undermine our ability to effectively seek out the best candidates, and so we could have this constant back and forth anytime we have a hire here at Rushford Peterson Schools, and it is unfortunate that this has become an issue, because it isn't about the individuals, it's about the person that we want that's going to best fit into what we have available, and in our conversations with both of the coaches, Dan and I, made the recommendation based on our conversations, our interview with both of those coaches. I will tell you as a board that Tom is not open or receptive to doing a co-head coach, and I'm gonna stand by the recommendation that Mr. Bebedor and I brought to you as a board. Tom has served the district for thirty-three years. We, in good faith and negotiations with him, convinced him that our one-year contract would serve him and the district in a win-win situation, and so I think out of respect for what he's provided to the district and the service that he's provided, that we ought to allow him the opportunity to finish his coaching career on, with Rushford Peterson, and in good standing.
How would you know that he wasn't interested in being a co-head coach without communicating to him?
I had to communicate that to him. I had to communicate to him that Chris had withdrawn his document, his letter of application.
So at that point, he would think he's the head coach, correct?
Possibly, yeah.
Where did the co-head coach come in though?
Because there was, that was out in the community, so I had to share with him so that he was aware of that, that that, there was some, um, conversations taking place in the community.
Did you talk to Chris?
I just read his email and responded to his email.
My side of this is that, this is all I wanna say about it, is, um, after last month's meeting, um, it was brought up, I think by Mr. Pettit, about how positions in the past had been offered to employees before non-employees, and I just wanna say that he's correct. I went back and did look, and that we actually even did for some coaches that back in my day were, we had somebody of interest, but they were told no because they were not an employee of the school. So on that note, I think that those statements that they made last month are true. I think we need to, um, you know, talk the talk, walk the walk. If it wasn't the way we were gonna hire the coaches from six years ago, five years ago, it shouldn't be the way we hire them now. With that said, I am, um, in support of Mr. Vicks, you know, he deserves, I believe, another opportunity for another year of coaching. What I personally would like to see is to make sure that that contract is one year. It's not to discredit him, but we owe that to Mr. Drinkle, and I think if we're telling Mr. Drinkle, excuse me, Mr. Drinkle that Mr. Vicks has stated one year, I want it to be one year.
He has done that?
Yes. Yeah, but I just mean there's, sometimes there's that remorse, and sometimes one year isn't enough, and I don't wanna have those conversations next year where, you know, just maybe one more year, you know? I'd like to say, "Oh, Brett Clark," but that makes me a little mad. But you know what I'm saying, because he did resign.
Yep. And out of respect for what you're sharing, is that I understand where you're coming from, and I'm gonna own that as your superintendent, the fact that there might have been some discrepancies as far as the following, the proper protocol, but I also want you to know as a board that Tom indicated to me verbally in May, after he attended his resignation, that he had another interest, so the technical part of this, when was he no longer an employee? Because he indicated to me verbally, prior to the end of his contract, that he was interested. So that becomes a gray area for me as your, as your superintendent. To be honest with you, we had two viable candidates, I didn't feel a need to go out and advertise the position at that time, so going forward though, and I understand, when we have someone that tenders a resignation, becomes that gray area, when does that become effective? So we will err on the side of saying technically, when you tender that resignation, make sure that you're, you're gonna understand that you're no longer an employee and you're not considered an employee as of the end of the school year.
Right. So.
That's very...
Yeah. And that's kind of, yeah, I agree with what Julie said, it's kind of, last month, it was more the process than anything, I had no issues with Tom, I had no issues with his coaching abilities, his dedication, it's the process.
And as I indicated you in my board packet, that's a procedural thing, and going forward, we'll learn from this experience, we'll put it away, and we'll use it as a future reference to make sure that we don't have the same kind of gray areas that have developed over this, this hire as well.
Do we have, is there actually a policy, I was confused by that?
There is no, there is no policy. But indication is...
I would be against having a policy, actually, like that. I mean, I've worked at a place where we did have such a policy, you know, like it was a community college, where we had to hire anybody inside that one position, we had to hire them, and most of the time that's great, but we have to remember, it's come that time down the road where somebody, "Well, I want it, and I'm an employee, so I get to do it," and, and it's not always gonna be the best position for the students, which I think is, it really has to be a priority. So, but I wanted to clarify, because absolutely if there was a policy that it should go to an inside person first, then it falls back on the technicality of when did Tom become an outside person, but if there really isn't an actual policy...
But we definitely establish a precedence, though.
We have, yeah, we have some, we have some past practices that we have...
Pretty hard and fast, and we had discussed, I remember when, I think the wrestling coach had to step down because a faculty member was interested in the coaching position. I know that was before your time, but...
And that was shared with me, and also, so again, that past practice was established, so.
I think you, maybe you were that.
Mine was, I'm thinking of a volleyball coach.
Okay. So again, as your superintendent, I accept that responsibility, and I apologize to you as a board members for not being more, a little bit more in tune to that, and not having that clarified for you as a board, so you can trust that in the future that that will not happen.
I have trouble seeing where your gray area is, superintendent. I, I read this letter many times, and he resigned the fifteenth of March, from coaching and teaching, there wasn't anything gray about it. We accepted that as a board, and then it seemed to go away, after there was a news article in the paper that said that Tom said he was kind of a free agent now. I, I don't know why, how free agency comes into it, and why we held this position. It appears to me, we held it until Tom decided he wanted to come back to it, after Catalonia or John Marshall or somebody else didn't take his free agency request, then we're bringing him back. I think, um, by June, this should have been absolutely filled, and maybe May, already. If he talked to you in May, I think you should have brought that to the board and, and let us deal with it, so I think, uh, I think when he resigned, he made a mistake by putting coaching on there, or maybe he thought he was gonna get a job at somewhere else, I don't know, but I, I just don't see it as being gray, it's pretty, pretty black and white, and I think, I think we're sitting on it, but that, the baseball job opened up a month ago, and in the next meeting, we filled it with the assistant coach, who had an interest in.
We filled it in July.
Yeah. Uh, the, I think there's some coaching positions open yet, after I, I may have missed it in my board minutes, but I think the girls' basketball coaching position might be open, and that's been since March, or has that been filled, I, I might have missed it.
He hasn't resigned from that position, if you're talking...
I'm not aware of any positions.
Okay, Coach Cala Petal is on, so there is no girl basketball opening.
Okay, so he resigned from teaching.
Teaching, huh?
Yeah, and so that's, that's a different situation.
I mean, I think there's conversation, but he has not, not taken that...
I didn't, I didn't have his letter of resignation, I didn't want to hear it. So, and that's, that's fine, I think he did exactly what he wanted to do, and that's, that's okay.
Any other comments on the varsity basketball?
I'll make a motion to hire Mr. Vicks for one more year.
Okay, motion, Michael, second?
First and a second. Actually, the motion to be to, to accept the recommendation from the administration.
Any other discussion?
Is that clearly stated here?
You can, you will.
If there's no further discussion, we saw that a roll call vote on the motion to approve of Mr. Vicks as varsity boys' basketball coach.
Valerie Howe?
Nay.
Joyce Iverson?
Aye.
Julie Coe?
Aye.
John Linder?
Aye.
Dean Mero?
Nay.
John Pettit?
Nay.
Bonnie Princeton?
Aye.
Motion carries, word three. Okay, moving on to item number three, which is the letter from Destiny Life Church, regarding renting the theater and preschool classrooms, that's item number three, basic recording.
Just wanna clarify for the, for them, the board's position, as I indicated to you last month, the cost to provide heating to that end of the building is in the neighborhood between seventy and eighty thousand dollars, and I'm going to just bring closure to that too, so that we can indicate to them that at the present time, that we don't envision as a board, or as a school district, envision investing, that, making that kind of investment for the purpose of them renting our facility. Just wanted your approval to make sure that I followed through with that and respond to their letter.
Anybody have any comments on the...
I'd like a recommendation from the board, or a motion from the board saying to instruct me to let them know that the district is not interested in providing rental space at this time.
Given that level of cost, do you think that only makes sense? I would make that motion.
And a second.
Joyce Iverson, up in the room. So the motion, so I understand this motion is to...
Form Destiny Life Church, we will not be making our building available for rental.
Yes.
Any further discussion on that issue?
Will we specify it's because of the cost? It's not anything else.
The cost wasn't involved, we'd be open and receptive to it, but that cost, that's probably...
Okay, all those in favor of directing Lieutenant Taylor to send the letter to Destiny Life Church, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close vote. Motion carries.
John, that might be out of order, but I'd like to back up one, one step, back to number two. We did, we did pass the hiring up, and, and maybe to help some of the board members that were toiling with this, and, and their, this is, so, concern, um, we've hired other people for odd number terms, like we, we've given the superintendent a three-year term this last night instead of two, and that, why wouldn't it be appropriate to offer Chris Drinkle a contract right now for that next year, instead of waiting to see, and then at the end say, "Well, it was only for one year," yeah, but, that was kind of, this would take care of it, it would be over and done, and I think it's something that would be within our authority, I just...
I'm just gonna caution you on that, because it sets a dangerous precedence of setting that in motion already. Who's to say that we wouldn't have another candidate that would, once you make it, and we advertise it, and we do, we follow the procedural guidelines as I outlined to you, who's to say we don't have another applicant? If you set this precedence for this position, what other positions are we going to have to adhere to, same precedence? It could be any teaching position, could be any administrative position, I think you're opening a whole can of worms when you set that type of precedence.
And that's exactly why I voted the way I did last time.
I understand it. I restrict you for that age, so, I understand it.
Slippery slope right now.
Yeah, I got it.
Anything else?
No, and if it's setting a precedent, I don't have a problem with that, I think it's doing the right thing. It's a year late, but I think it's doing the right thing, and I don't have a problem in doing, doing things that are right, because other people don't like it.
I think a lot of things could happen between now and the beginning of next year, you know, one has no idea. Typically, we're hiring people for the coming year.
I don't know if there's any correlation with the UCLPS.
You never know.
Okay, moving on, item number seven, new business, new school, approval changer number fourteen, Mr. Roderick Stone, are you ready to go?
Well, Tim, there seems to be some confusion, because the board has fifteen in front of them, so we might need to clarify that.
Actually, we do, and in fact, we've lost that, so I'll, I'll wing this one. Change order, we have two change orders, this month, change order number fourteen... This one, change order number fourteen was for the stone out in the front. If you remember, it would have been February. We went to, it's the stone case work that we had guaranteed a not-to-exceed number of seventy-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That's for all the stone case work coming up the front. What that was, they basically, they got done with it, they had rebuilt it several times due to a material failure. The actual cement and the grout in the camp on the manufacturer failed. So he took about half of that wall back off and redid it three times. He, he spent a considerable amount of money, larger than that not-to-exceed number that we had authorized way back in the day. And so just for clarity, that's why I included that one on its own recognizance, if you will, the change order of that seventy-nine thousand, because we basically approved it right at the first of the year. And so now it is done to the point where they are ready to get paid for it. So that's that one. The change over fifteen, the one that you guys?
Tim, you got to stop me right there. We're not able as a board to address change order fifteen as not part of the agenda item?
Oh, okay.
We're not able to discuss that or approve it this evening?
Okay.
So that'll have to wait until next month.
Will you do that too?
Sorry. So the board change order fourteen is the one that you're going to be addressing tonight?
How much was that again?
It's seventy-nine thousand five ninety-eight. We had, we had approved that one as a, as a go-ahead back at the first part of the year. This is literally just a cleanup, this is the paperwork catching up to that room, so there's really not even a board approval meeting on that one. I mean, I just want to say, yep, we're executing it today. That's, because that was given at the first.
You could lay out fifteen though, and you know, as far as, we wouldn't be able to approve it, but.
Sure.
Finish every, anything you wanted to give us on it.
Fifteen, fifteen as a whole is, as you guys know, we're, we've got a certificate of occupancy on the project in the building. This is the first of the last two cleanup change orders. We're going to have one more change order, so the next month, we can have this change order fifteen and change order sixteen on the docket. I'll have those all ready and by then we ought to be done and there should be no more change orders. So that'll be the final board vote on, on financial, contracting, financial changes with the project. But what it does is, it's literally, it's cleanup, it's, we're addressing some, several smaller items. There's about twenty-one small change requests on here. There are some larger ones, there's two large ones. One is a garage cleanup and that is basically for auto mechanics. That takes the whole entire space to GFCI-protected electricity, so that way there's, there's, I won't say no risk of shock or electrocution, but with GFI, that's designed to prevent that type of operation. And then we have a flooring, basically a flooring offset for the fitness room where we took that out of the contractor's scope of work and the district with Dan's leadership has purchased a more logo-centric weight room type flooring that is going to have all the Rusher Peterson logos, et cetera, all that. Those two basically offset each other. And then, like I said, there's just a bunch of small cleanups. We added hydration stations to the locker rooms. That is just a fancy name for the water fountain with, with a sensor on the back of it, so you can put a bottle, you can pull a bottle in, it saves your refills and all that. So you just refill your, all your sport bottles. Moving cabinetry is just massaging in the district when the teachers started to come in, when they didn't want their millwork in one area, they would have been on the opposite wall. So it's just labor cleanup on those items. We have the concrete retaining walls and the benches in the front of the property that created seating, more seating areas for us, just small little lounging areas kind of right on that very front wall. And that was actually a double, a double win because we also lowered the slope from a two to one to about a four to one area right there in the very front of the building. So it made it look a lot friendlier, if you will. It's not just a steep two to one. Couple of toilet room cleanups. We had the little teeny tiny kitty toilets. I don't know if you guys have seen one yet, you know, I have to go see this thing. It's about the size of my work boot. There was, there was one of those installed in Bosco Room. We took that one out and put a full-size in and so, you know, that was three hundred and forty dollars, you know, for a new one. But it's literally, it's, it's smaller items like that. There's really, there's nothing earth-shattering or life-changing that I, that I see at all. A couple of sound attenuation panels. We added a little more facade, a little more dress up in the front, put some more wall tile back here in the little niche area, just extending that, just making it more, a little more warm, a little more friendly. That's really about it. I guess the reasoning behind it was when I first presented it to Lauren earlier today, we had that, we had a, it was, the number was larger. As I started incorporating some of these additional PCOs to try to slip them in to get them in this month, the number shrank by almost thirteen thousand, but part of that was that offset of the flooring upgrade. But that's kind of the gist of PCO fifteen. We'll keep that one, this one as is for next month, so you can have that review for the whole month and then by, by next presentation, we'll have sixteen done and we'll be able to vote on both and be bundled up.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Robertson? That will be up for a motion to approve change order number fourteen.
How much is the motion?
Motion by how? Your second?
Second.
All those in favor of approval, change order number fourteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those know? Motion carries. Moving on to item two, please, Tim.
Yes, sir.
Approve the fundraiser for the seventeen eighteen school year, the age sixteen. Looks like the usual list. Anything new here, Mr. Robertson?
No, we tried to, again, encourage everyone from trap shooting to all of our various activities, that anybody that's doing it outside, so that the board is aware of it. Anytime we have fundraisers going on, there seems to be a little bit of pushback because of the impact it has both on residential and business communities, so, so you're aware of that as well. But it's always nice for the board to be aware of that and it's part of the whole process.
Not good to settle here, but the process, is there rotation for the concessions? Is there like a every third year, every other year, or how is?
Let Mr. Bebedork respond to your question.
Sure. As far as changes out there, that is one that is new, in terms of modified, because for a number of years, in other words, for extensive tenure down there, it was indoor concessions where the fan, fan boosters fundraiser.
Okay.
Moving to the new facility, we're making that into more of a rotational thing like you alluded to, modeled after, not the best practices, but what Bill Riotta and St. Charles and some of the other local schools have done now too, where they allow this as an opportunity instead of one group, to rotate through other groups as well. They put out the number of events they're hosting, different groups can sign up, whether it's an athletic group, whether it's post-prom, through council, whatever, any of these groups to then sign up. Part of that is, they obviously provide the workers, they work the event, they do the cleanup, and then it's a joint profit sharing for fall season, kind of separate, and then the winter season. And that's what we discussed a year and a half ago with retirement of how we were doing. We end up going, finishing the school under the old system and then now we're making the transition now that we're in the new facility with new equipment and that is something that, that with your approval of the fundraiser, of course, that I would then oversee in terms of coordination of all those different student groups. Again, that's kind of what like a St. Charles and a Bill Riotta and some of the other schools are doing, given that opportunity, so we don't have to go out if, if there's an activity like baseball that, so they don't have to sell sunflower seeds and or whatever as an outside additional thing. This would be an opportunity for them to generate some dollars if there's needs above and beyond. Post-prom is another great example, instead of having to create your own, they would be one of the groups that the participants in indoor concession should.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Yep.
Any more questions about the fundraisers?
That's a lot of fundraisers. Times to change.
To that point, that's a lot of fundraisers and since I've been on the board, this isn't the end. Well, we seem to have three or four more every year that didn't think of it, so I would like this to be the end. They got it in, this is what it's going to be. Something comes up, I'll find a rent checker or somebody to pay for it, maybe the, I don't know. But I, I would not want to see any more fundraisers being brought before, as we go. I think that is board policy, but they've, they've done it differently each year, so maybe the timing is bad, maybe we shouldn't be doing our approval at this meeting, maybe it should be either one last year or one coming up, so that the, the people in charge are thinking about those things instead of in the summer or are planning their trips and know they have to have the money. So maybe this is just a bad, a bad time reason, is why we get them later in the year? I don't know, but I, I have absolutely no problem with the way it is and the way Dan has told us it's going to happen for the concession. I think that's, that's great and that might solve a lot of these latecomers and that it'll give Dan the headache instead of somebody else.
If I may interject, and thank you for sharing that concern, and I'd like to be hard and fast with that as well, but as Mr. Tim will attest to, when our student council meets and sometimes they get excited about the possibility of doing something. For example, last year, I know we did some, our group in Haiti, so we don't want to squash them for doing that, so I understand your concern though, as a board, you'd like to say to your staff, plan in advance and we try to do that as much as possible. I will ask you to entertain some flexibility on which group is bringing that to you and why they're bringing it to you. So I just want to leave that, a little bit of flexibility and adaptability there as far as that, instead of being hard and fast.
I recall, wasn't it the trap shooting fundraiser that kind of came up?
Last round.
Yeah.
And they, they were encouraged and they're listed this year, they, they got the message.
But there was, there were some extenuating circumstances there, were there not?
Correct.
Yes.
It's kind of sad, but it's the nature of education today, that some of these things that, you know, maybe way in the past when I was in school, things that could be funded then are not funded now, so, so, you know, the only option one is to fundraise.
Any other comments on the list of fundraisers? Not for a motion?
All makes a motion to approve the list of fundraisers.
Motion by how? Is there a second?
Iverson, a second.
All those in favor approving the list of fundraisers for the upcoming school year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those know? carries? Okay, moving on to item three of new business, approve the date and time for the truth and taxation meeting. The proposal is Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, six fifteen, in this room. Is that our regular monthly meeting, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, it is.
So designate a specific time so that presidents have the opportunity to be present for that discussion by the board.
Any other questions on that? Make more sense to do it on a regular working.
I'll make the motion to do that.
Motion by Princeton?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor approving the Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, date at six fifteen in this room for the truth and taxation meeting, signify by saying aye.
John, just one quick thing, just to point out, there is a concert schedule for seven p.m. that night, is the six fifteen's not a conflict? I don't know how long that meeting lasts, but there is a seven p.m. high school, middle school choir concert that night.
I think it's a short meeting.
It may be shorter. All right, I didn't need to interrupt you.
I think we can work it out. Okay, so the motion is to approve the date team at six fifteen, December eighteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those know? carries? Moving on to item four, new business, approve the contracted PSEO memorandum agreement with Minnesota State College Southeast, pages seventeen through twenty-three.
This allows us to work with Southeast Tech and just a memorandum, making sure that we have an agreement with them to facilitate the different things that we work with them as far as our students and as far as PSEO is concerned, which is post-secondary enrollment options. It's worked well for us and we would entertain to the board to consider this as a win-win situation for Rusher Peterson School as well as Minnesota Southeast.
I'm assuming that the address will be corrected in the agreement?
Yes. Thank you for correcting that, yeah.
I found just a few tables that I gave to Lauren, slightly changed the meaning, meaning of a couple of sentences.
Thank you for doing that.
Do we have any questions on this contract? It's similar to the ones we've had in the past.
Colton, you have a motion, should I vote?
Should I call to approve? Your second?
Iverson, a second.
Second, Iverson. Further discussion on the PSEO contract? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those know? carries? Item five, approve the concurrent enrollment memorandum agreement with Minnesota State College Southeast, located on pages twenty-fourth to twenty-nine.
Very similar to the PSEO, only the, the difference is, is this is a course that's being taught by our own staff here and students get credit at Rusher Peterson as well as the Minnesota Southeast. So, again, it's been a win-win situation for our school as well as Minnesota Southeast College.
Any comments, questions? For motion to approve?
Yeah, make that motion.
Your second?
President will second, please.
All those in favor of approving the concurrent enrollment memorandum agreement with Minnesota State College Southeast, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those know? carries? Item six, new business, designate our reach and recycling services provider, pages thirty and thirty-one.
We've done a little comparison shopping between our current provider, which is Weight Ninety One Services, and Harders, which is also a provider in, in our community as well. And based on the numbers that we have received, there is a cost savings for the district to go with Harders at this time. So we're asking the board to allow us to discontinue our service, our contract. We really don't have a contract with them, just an agreement with, with management.
Where's Harders based up?
For us and across. They're both up across.
I personally have worked with Harders through my business or where I work.
I personally have worked with Harders through my business where I work, and they're easy to work with, very helpful and no complaints.
Rushford Village has contacted with Harders for the years. It's been accepted.
What's the cost savings based on?
Well, it's going to vary depending on which type of, be it garbage pickup or recycling, and both of them are cost savings to us, so it could vary anywhere from, Lord, I have me out here on the monthly that you and I talked about today.
We're looking at right around like $400 a month.
How much notice do we have to give?
Thirty days.
Any comments, questions, wish to make, motion?
Make a motion to change Harders quick cleanup.
Motion by call to go with Harders. Second?
Second by I.
Any further discussion? All in favor of going with the Harders quick cleanup for our garbage and recycling? Second by a saying aye.
Aye.
Close no? Curious? Moving on to item seven, discussion regarding the possible hiring of a school nurse. This was your request for the agenda, you wish to address that?
Yes, I, as well as everybody else on the board, did receive a email from Nana Thompson, and it kind of jogged me a little. It's something that I had long to forget about for much too long. When I first came to the district, we didn't have a school nurse, and I asked the superintendent, which was Dennis Rizzol, at that time about it, and he said, that's okay because we're right across the street from the clinic, and the clinic was, and that made sense. It was only this school in Rushford, nothing else. Well, since then, many things have changed, and the location of clinic was the first one to change. We also consolidated with Peterson, that made a change, and to all this change, we didn't do anything about a school nurse. I know that when I was first beginning, the teachers administered the aspirin or whatever it might have been, and being pretty involved in teacher negotiations and things back then about the work there, I got involved in some discussions and it was just dropped again, it never did happen. So I think this was a great time to bring this to our attention, and I think it's something that absolutely has to be dealt with. I can't imagine the number of kids that are taking medication that I know of. I can't imagine the ones I know of, but there's so many more, I think. I know my son had Tylenol with him, and that would, he couldn't administer that himself in a district. Had to have somebody administer it for him. So the law has changed amazingly since then, and so I think they have to also point it out to us that with the changes in the law, we need to, as the district makes adjustments, understand that the new school has a place for a quietness nature, so at least it was looked ahead far enough to include that in the building, and I would not only like to discuss this, but I think we should act on the school nurse position for our district, especially now that we're in this consolidated area.
Anybody have any thoughts?
I just have a lot of questions about what's in place now. I mean, what are we doing now as a parent, kids are using school, and I know that getting this great assistance is really our, that's where medication is kept, but I guess I've never read or heard the procedure. I'm assuming there is one, and I have great faith in the administration assistance, I have to say, but what's being, what do we do now?
Well, we currently train our administrative assistants, so, but as they indicated to you and the concern that was indicated to you is that there's lots of recommendations and guidelines particularly, as was pointed out to you, that school districts should be aware of and should take into consideration. So we do address that with our administrative assistants, and they are receiving training on administration of that. We've tried to, this year coming in, we've tried to streamline that a little bit so that we have a para that's designated as that person to assist the office personnel. They're not going to be able to do a hundred percent of them, but they'll do the majority of them. So again, that person is trained. Would it be helpful? Yes, I understand that. I guess my recommendation to the board this evening is, I certainly applaud that, I certainly applaud the concern that was shared with you as well. I would like to have the ability to get some research for you as a board so that you know what other school districts are doing. You're not required by statute to have a nurse on staff because your enrollment is under a thousand students, so you're not required, but as John pointed out and as was pointed out by, and as well as that, you know, there are ongoing issues that as a school district, we need to be more in tune with, and we know that students require a wide range of medications in this day and age, so it would be prudent for us to at least explore those options as well. So again, my recommendation is to allow me to poll the area schools and find out what other school districts are providing and bring you some information to work off with as well.
Yeah, I think you need to look into it because mental health, they, you know, their doses have to be correct in certain times and, you know, autism and all that stuff. And I'm also concerned what happens if a child refuses to take the medicine. I mean, especially with kids with autism and mental health, you know, it's vital that they do.
Not uncommon for them to do that, and so as part of the administration that when they're trained in that is to make sure that they're physically watching the child take the medication and then asking them to open their mouth to ensure that it's been swallowed and make sure it's not under their tongue and their cheek and all those different things, yeah. Kids can be very, as you alluded to already, very adaptable as to saying, I'm going to resist doing that, yeah. So that's on Collins as well.
One thing I question is that since we are a smaller school and it's not a requirement than what you were stating, is there a need for in other schools that are our size that you could do like a job share, you know, if they're listed in Rushford, half days so that they're kind of smoothly able to have somebody every day?
Do they not have a call? Nurse, retired nurse or somebody retired who lives in the area?
Because it's true that I do agree with mental health and all these things that are coming up in today's world, that we can at least have something to take that stress off of and ministry like staff.
Would it be wise, now that we're aware of this, to have an interim person responsible for delegating an interim RN or LTM?
Maybe kind of a lot of that question is, I think it is, it's, I'm glad Mrs. Thompson brought this up, it gives us a chance to look at just how we deal with, you know, health and first aid altogether, so I, you know, and I'm hoping that he can, as you said, so we're not legally required to have a nurse on staff. I'd be interested also just if, you know, is there more training that people could have? If, you know, if we don't decide we're going to hire a nurse, can hire other things we can do to assure that we are, you know, following the guidelines, we have enough people trained? Do we have enough training in first aid and CPR, and is there extra training that could take medications? You know, could it be others instead of, you know, the nursery assistants? It's probably a good chance to look at all of that, you know.
And how it fits into the budget too?
We've just taken care of the athletes. We have a pretty extensive athletic training program that I'm sure is just as good as any school in the area, whether it's one of the big guys or the little guys. So I think our numbers sometimes are often, I'd like to see us be on the leading edge of things instead of on the backside and wait to see what other people are doing or well, we don't have to, so why should we? I think we should, but our students are absolutely ahead of a game of numbers whether it's close or not. That's what I think we should do.
We did make a decision to have heated steps to prevent accidents, maybe some caution here, well worth it. I just think we should start getting something in place so that we're working towards a goal.
I'm not against that at all. I just, I wanted to get a better handle on what we've been doing, I guess, areas need to fix, and I guess what I'm hearing is that the issues, it's not that bad things have happened in the past, there have been any incidents, but we're trying to prevent that and also legality is a thing about that too, so.
How much time do you think we need to?
I will bring it to you tonight, board.
Anybody have any thoughts on the motion or table it or just very alligator information?
I think when Mr. Eller has the information together, puts on the agenda, if he knows more than a month, I'll be with him.
No, I'll let it to you tonight, board.
Well, it is on the agenda, so you need to take action on it or table it.
Any questions to table it to next month?
We're going to let a second hold the table, second in here. All in favor of table this issue pending further information? Second by a saying aye.
Aye.
Close no?
I just think that I have seen, if we can't make a decision in September, I would like some kind of interim, interim coverage.
Sure. Six, six oh. Okay, moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Eller.
Well, first of all, I just, it's not on the agenda this evening, but just to extend my thanks and appreciation for, well, it is on the agenda, but I'll do it first, it is on my report, but ribbon cutting and ceremony, just my thanks to everyone that participated that. Mrs. Thompson is here tonight as well, was very instrumental in leading the charge and helping the residents from Good Shepherd to be here, and so we were very pleased to see a number of them in attendance, and my thanks to you for assisting with that as well, making that a priority for their residents. I do have the opportunity to go to Good Shepherd on a monthly basis through my church, and I'm pleased to say that it's always exciting to see them, to involve them in community activities, so that was very heartwarming as well. But all in all, and for those of you that were in attendance, it was well received as far as the attendance, it were from, you know, twelve to fifteen hundred people made their way through. Tim was president as well as dean and representatives from Weiser Construction. In my presentations, I did forget to recognize two of our vendors that have been instrumental, so I want to take the opportunity tonight to recognize them, and they've been instrumental with our furniture, and that is the firm of Schmidt Goodman, Dick and Kathy, the owners of that out of Rochester, they have been just phenomenal to work with, and then Gary Fettchner of Inn, it's called Innovative Office, he has worked with us as well, and as Tim can indicate to you tonight, thanks to the efforts of our staff, we were able to expand, we were able to expand our furniture purchase from, we originally were going six to twelve, and due to what we as a staff and decided that we were going to be responsible for the assembling of the furniture and unpacking and all of those things involved with it so that we could expand our purchase so that we were able to include fourth and fifth grade. So very happy that that took place, but all in all, I would hope that you as a board and would embrace everything that was so positive on Saturday. Again, just very, very overwhelmed by the response that we received, and I'm hoping that you as board members, as in turn, have received positive comments from community members as well, so. Special note of thanks to my leadership team, to Dan Bebedorv and Corey Metzen and Lisa Austin and Jake Tim and Angela Shepherd for their involvement in that process as well. And I may give another special thanks to Lisa for her efforts in quiz coordinating and organizing and overseeing and assisting with that. She's gone above and beyond with all that, so again, just a very, very positive thing and very exciting for the district to have this historic occasion, and we truly have been blessed as a school and as a community, and I will continue to advocate that, that we have been blessed throughout the whole process. Again, a warm welcome to Anna tonight as our student representative, thank you for taking on this responsibility, I appreciate that as well.
Just to back up, yeah, just, I wanted to give, it went really well, I think, the opening and all the things that I think we really owe us, gratitude to our superintendent that's done a marvelous job of working through all this, it's been a lot going on and, you know, there's all kinds of things, a lot of moving parts, and keeping the ball on the air was pretty good, so, yeah, I had a lot of good comments too, so.
Great.
And I'll have to extend a thank you to Joyce as well and the kitchen staff, they did a fabulous job.
They did.
A lot of people, and I'm just small on it, I mean, I think I only saw what was three or four people back there working, and they were working very hard, but they were very pleasant and a good selection, very well received.
I will be happy to do that.
Student ambassadors really did a lot too in school.
And that group is called the We Group, and Mr. Tim can give you some more information. Nina Torkelson serves as that, and then, you know, the fact that, you know, Lisa went above and beyond to get them involved and organized, she trained each one of those groups to understand just the various areas of the school building itself, and then just making sure that everybody was properly attired, and they did look very professional, so thank you again for recognizing that as well, certainly don't want to leave them out, but they did a stellar job as well, just serving as great ambassadors for our school district, so. Again, I can't tell you enough positives that came out of that, and hopefully we are going to be the recipients of the fact that people recognize what agenda we have here, and so thank you again for bringing those other items to my attention. And so, thank you again for bringing those other items to my attention as well. Again, backing up, going on to Anna, again, Anna, thank you again for accepting this opportunity, and we look forward to having your input and serving as a voice of the students. A special thank you again, I want to go on to say that we still have volunteers that are here. We had volunteers here today putting shelving units together. It's just nonstop, and we're really blessed because Lisa has to make one or two phone calls, and we have those people at our doorstep. So I can't say enough nice things. The construction of the playgrounds went seamlessly, just the right number of volunteers, just wow, you know, I want you to be very proud of what they've accomplished in a short period of time. In those two and a half days, they did a marvelous job, so. And the moving process, believe it or not, we're down to just, we're down to the shop areas. We did get the metal shop moved on last Friday, and we'll be moving the wood shop tomorrow. And the district office is waiting for our abilities to have access to a copy machine and printers before we make the final move, so we're just holding off on that. So hopefully by early next week, we'll be making that final move. Auditors, again, they were in last week. As you know, we're working with a new firm this year, Smith Schaper, and they did a very effective and efficient job, and I appreciate the work that went into that by Antoni's part and Laura's assistance as well. Thanks to that, again, things were highly organized and seemed to go extremely well. You can note on your November twentieth meeting that they will be present to provide you what their findings were as far as the update on the school's financial positions. New school update, as Tim indicated to you tonight, we're down to, we're, it's exciting to say we're down to those final, final couple of documents, and we're down to those final punch lists. And, yeah, there's some detailed work that's continued to be finalized here, but again, we're very open and receptive. I'm going to give Tim a lot of credit because as your owner's rep, he is championing your cause throughout this whole process, and he's kept his foot on the gas here even these last few weeks, and will continue to do so. So thank you, Tim, again. I couldn't have done this without your help and assistance, so. But you can be assured that things will be in place prior to letting things go. And Tim shared with the project oversight committee tonight that we have a ten-month walkthrough, so in ten months, we get to ask our staff, what are the things that you're not happy with, be it room temperature, be it other things that are going on, carpet fraying, you name it. We'll ask them to kind of keep a log throughout the year, and then we will be doing that ten-month, and Tim will, he's not going to let go, we're not going to let it go quite yet. And so, the keeper, he came on arm's length here for the time being, but he's still on speed dial, so that he'll be coming back and assisting with that ten-month. Tim, anything you want to add to that as well?
That's the same thing. It's Chuck, you were more than half of this. You made my job easy. That's, that's the simple part of it. I mean, yeah, that's, that's it. I'm the point of contact from now until whenever you don't want me to be a point of contact. We do have a one-year's warranty, and so that's why we implement that ten-year, or ten-month walk that Chuck was talking about, so we make sure we don't miss anything that can make the project just that much better.
Thank you again, Karen. So preparation for the new school year, obviously, you know, we have some challenges facing us, and time factors of the elements here, with the whole moving process going on and everything else. We have, we have to make the most of every day that we have, every minute we have, and trying to get that under, underway. We do have some indications as far as new students for next year. Mrs. Shepherd, what is the number at?
We are just set to, more students were up to thirty than I have.
Okay. So as you know, last year, we graduated a class of sixty-one, and we were only bringing in forty kindergarteners, so there's down twenty-one students, so now we have a net gain of nine students, so that's exciting news, so we'll welcome that with open arms. So thank you for sharing that, Mrs. Shepherd.
Do you know, like, what is the problem with open enrollments, or are they new people to the area?
Mrs. Shepherd.
Most, most of them have moved here. We do have, you know, the enrollment, that wants to move here.
I think that's huge. I think that's wonderful.
I agree.
What a thought in the school, a great people mover.
The MREA, as you're familiar, that's the Minnesota Rural Education Association. They have their fall regional meetings. We are going to serve as the host, and that's next Monday, the twenty-eighth.
I went to it last year, Julie and I, and I encourage all of you to go because it is so interested, interesting what other principals, superintendents, you know, need to discuss their problems and what they need, and it's very admirable thing. It's all the districts around here.
Are you going to do a tour?
Yes, we are. Thank you for asking. We will be doing a tour at five, yeah. We'll be doing a tour starting at five forty-five, so that's going out as the invite, and so we're excited to share that. You know, I, yeah, just want you to know that, you know, the, I'm just tickled by what the new school is going to provide us as a district and as a community. So we have lots of requests from different organizations about coming in and allowing us. Take a look at this room here. This is the meeting room. You see the flexibility that people provide. The community is excited about this as well, so we'll have a number of requests coming at us this year. The nice thing about the We Group that you brought up earlier is that for my administrative team to be able to say to someone that wants to come in or a group of people that want to come in and see the school, that we can rely on those individuals to help and assist us with it, so that it doesn't interfere with our responsibilities as well. So we're excited about that as well.
Could any of us join the tour at five forty-five of the improvements?
Please, please come in. You're more than welcome to join.
Thank you.
So on that note, that concludes my meeting, my board report for this month.
Any questions, Mr. Eller? Okay, thank you. Moving on to community ed, page thirty-four and thirty-six.
Yeah, and Lisa asked me just to report on some things. Give me a second here, and I'll just get that back sheet out. She has things listed for you there as well. I did announce on Saturday, in case you were inquiring as to the donation received by our early childhood program, and that was in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars that staff listed on your list tonight, but our, we're happy to report that the early childhood received that grant through what is called the Neil E. Parte Family Foundation. So we accept that with open arms, and that will be used to expand and improve the furniture for the early childhood program. So we've expanded that this year, and we're excited to have those dollars to work with as well. So as you are well aware, Lisa has been instrumental in the moving process, the volunteers, open house, the cutting of the ribbon and so forth, and again, she has embraced that and done just an awesome job with all of those things. And things went pretty seamless as far as the community build on the playground, the ribbon cutting, and the other entities that we have going on on Saturday as well. So I hats off to her along that. Along with that, our preschool and elementary playgrounds, as I indicated, were both built last week, and we are waiting for the surface for the early childhood area. As you know, that is a rubberized material, and so we're waiting for that to come in as well. We have moved forward with the purchase of trash cans, and those would be placed around the school as well. We're still looking at, you know, what to do out front here as far as seating out front. As you probably noticed, we have a couple of benches out there. Thought we're going to ask you to be patient and just let us kind of have it flow with that. One of the things that we're looking at futuristically is can we put some seating out there so in the fall of the year or the spring of the year, we could have students that could utilize that area as an extension of the common area. So we'll rely on our students a little bit to help us, guide us in that direction as Jill is finishing up the kids' club, and that finished last, on August, on Friday, August twelfth. On average, the number of days, they were down a little bit, but that was expected due to the move and the fact that we were not serving summer meals this year. But again, my thanks to the young people that served that program and did just an outstanding job with our kids, attended kids' club. Also, the summer rec program went extremely well. She had over seven hundred and thirty-two registrations for those activities, and she's wishing to extend a special thanks on behalf of the district to all of our coaches and staff that worked hard all summer to make this a positive experience for the students. And she's extending a very special thank you to Jill Rasmussen and Holly Efrin for the work that they do with the, with the summer rec. And we're very fortunate to have them and the consistency that they bring to the program. So some of the events coming up, we have play football coming up, youth and tackle Little Rockers will begin soon, and then youth dance will be underway here in September as well. So that's Lisa's highlights for her community ed.
Thanks. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to elementary principals' report.
Thank you. First thing I was going to talk about, as I put in my notes, twenty of us went to first two thousand seventeen Institute of Better Learning, which is something Mr. Tim wrote about and brought to our teaching staff. We went to Cassin, the twenty of us, and there were six hundred people there. They had started each day with an hour keynote and ended each day with an hour keynote. In between, there were eight breakout sessions, and then they had a lunch break, and then two, so there were eight choices, and then two in the morning, two in the afternoon. And they were all just wonderful. They came, I mean, laughed a lot, you got a little message out of each of them. Couple of things was one of the first, all means of the healthy culture, being an unwavering belief and ability of each student to achieve success. Another one was why drives everything, get clear on the why. Seek first to understand, then to be understood. And then one of them, big messages is students are human, so things happen, students are human. It was just a great experience. It was nice, a couple, let's see, eleven of us went up in the vans, and it was just nice talking on the way out, thinking about what it was going to be, it was a little over an hour, and you get there, and then on the way home, everyone was about talking about what they, because we all basically went to whatever we thought would be our best choices, and some of them made sure, you know, certain groups were covered and everyone about, so we heard them all. It was very positive. Everyone left just feeling great. With six hundred people there, I knew a lot of people, as you said, had lunch, visited with some, you know, new people and some people you've talked to before, just in our list here, you know, from kindergarten all the way up to the high school, so in between. So I know Mr. Tim, and it's a great plan that our entire staff should attend this. And they're talking, it will be in Cassin again next year, to be a such positive response. A lot of people that I went with in the van were, yeah, I'd go to that one, I'd go to this again, that'd be great, go to this. And I know their plan on this is to have the same ideas, but different, you know, different. So it's a great, great idea, and it was wonderful. Our CPI training coming up, we have a lot of staff who are trained, we have been trained this year, Ashley Brown, who is part of our district already through HED. One thing highlighted from when we, on Saturday, when we had our open house, we had a lot of people who had walkers and wheelchairs and that. Where's the elevator? Right there, you hop in, up they land, off they went. It was just, they felt so, you know, welcome with it. And I know there were a lot of steps out there, but I personally didn't hear one that said anything about going up the ramp. I know the ramp, but it's, it's there, and that's what we have it for, and they used it, and they were excited about it. A lot of the kids were excited, they were climbing up the learning stairs, having lunch, and just all kinds of just excitement. And then with the playground, you know, we peek out the windows as they went through classes, and just wonderful and exciting, so a lot of positives. Like Mr. Eller had me say about the new students, we, I went around Diane today and how many new desks we needed in some of her rooms, and I think we're about twelve new desks, twelve more desks are needed in elementary because of our sixteen new students, so very positive. I also got a call today from a very nice lady who was concerned about middle break, and some of the families can't afford it, and she's sending a check for two thousand dollars to help that, our clause on that. So she said it was in the mail, she just wrote out, she wanted just to be anonymous, and just wanted to pour the cause, so that everybody was able to have a lunch break. And like we've done other years, when we got it from another source the other years, it's kind of what Brittany in the front office sees, or by more, some of them need something. So that it wasn't meant for middle break, and I know preschool has a snack break, so that would be part of that fund, funds to go for that as well. She's very generous, and I was very thankful when I talked to her. She was just excited to be a part of it. She was here Saturday, and she just was bubbly about it, so it was wonderful.
Mr. Eller, thank you, Mona, we have to school here.
Sure, glad to.
We listen, we'll need to move in as a school.
Yes, right. Thank you.
All right, any questions, Mrs. Shepherd? Thank you, Mr. Tim.
Yes, thank you. To start there, I just have our district level MCA scores from last spring. Up top there, as you see, we went up a couple of percentage points in reading, in math, and then we went up six percent, five, six percentage points in science, again, above the state average of the district, so very well for our students. And as you look through the rest of them there, each, we've got started through eleventh grade, the one grade that's full is our sixth grade students that are below the state average. That was last year when we sat here and met. Those are fifth grade students are below the state average last year, but I don't know the exact numbers, but they improved from fifth grade to sixth grade. So they're still below the state average, but they did show an improvement. So that's one of those things, that they're closing the gap. So I commend the students and the staff in sixth grade on that, and hopefully next year, they're at the state average or above, so they're kind of still moving and gaining, which is the main priority is that they're gaining. So as always, we use this as a one-time snapshot, because when we talk with the media on it, this is a big thing for them, but if that day when the kid could have had a real good morning, the kid could have had a fight with mom or dad, the kid might not have slept last night, might have been hungry, so it's a one-time snapshot that we use along with everything else. But it's just good to know, and at the end of the report today, you guys kind of saw the HED scores against the neighboring schools, as well as the state average, and in the top third, almost every area, science was second in that area, so a pretty good thing for our students. And again, something to be proud of, so. As everyone's kind of hit on with the projects, just commending, we had middle school and high school students volunteering like crazy, it's part of the move, the playground build, the furniture build, you name it. We've had a few that have been here every day begging for a silver cord hour, so they've kind of really used it for the silver cord hour, which is a great thing. Also, we had, when we did the playground build, we had a group of six students from Caledonia along with the principal come up and help us build the playground, and that was just, we talked to her over the summer, she said, I've got some students that want to give back, that like to help, that want to come, she goes, please let us know when you need us. So we kind of set that up, and for half the day, they came up and worked very alongside our kids building playgrounds. So it was just a neighboring communities helping each other out, which was kind of cool. And being our students on Saturday with the oohs and ahs, I took them on kind of a tour, and it was, it was just awesome. They just were oohs and ahs the whole time, and the girls of the group were very much the theater and the arts, and they walked into the auditorium and were almost in tears because it was so beautiful, and the boys were athletes when they saw the gym, and almost were in tears because it was so beautiful. So in both ways, you had, you had schools, neighboring kids, they kind of were jealous of what we had, and were just excited to come here for athletic events or one act play or stuff like that. So it was kind of cool that helping out. Last one there is, over the summer, we had a group of staff members all the way from preschool through high school, along with pairs, pairs of students, to come up with universal expectations, and we're calling Trojan Pride. The biggest thing we're going to work with our students this year is The biggest thing we're going to work with our students this year is be respectful, be responsible, be safe. That's the big thing around school and as we always say, high school kids, you have the unique opportunity of being in a building with students from age 18 to age 3. And being in this type of building gives you a different level of responsibility than going to like Winona where you're a high school student, you can be a high school student and not have to worry. Over here, you, they look up to you like crazy and just really trying to get our middle school, high school kids to understand that when that four-year-old, five-year-old walks by you, you are the king of the world to them and whatever they see you do, they think is okay and acceptable. So trying to teach our elementary kids the expectation of being a good student, being a good person, being respectful, responsible and safe, and teaching our high school kids the same thing, but also teaching them how to demonstrate that to little kids and how to make a difference and how to be a leader. So that's kind of our goal for this year and we've got lots of fun stuff planned. We've got some prizes, some giveaways, we're going to do pep fest assemblies. We're just going to try to get our staff on board and just try to make it a very positive place so that same excitement that was here last Saturday, our kids have that and our staff has that all year long, that on top of, you know, learning, that's a great place to be and to feel safe and to feel just good about yourself coming here. So that's a big push this year. Free foreign exchange families, so it's kind of our free family that are there, the three students that are coming. And it's always nice to bring students from other countries here to see our culture and thankful families as always, and then just some upcoming events that we have there.
Two number included, these three students?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to extend a personal thanks to Mr. Tim. Every year, we kind of wait for this data to come out as far as the test scores and issue with everything that's going on as far as the move and everything else, just kind of staying on top of everything going on. I didn't have to nudge him this year, he just took that thing and ran with it. So thank you, Mr. Tim, for recognizing the need to, because we get phone calls immediately as soon as they're placed in and where they're no longer, they, they send them out to school districts. They are embargoed for what, 72 hours?
Yep.
And then they release it to the media. And you better have your stuff crunched so that you can compare, do some comparisons. So thank you again, it's just awesome. And we will be sharing this information with our staff after this date. And you know, I'm just going to tell you that, you know, even though we're very pleased with the results here that we're sharing with you this evening, by no means does that mean we're going to sit still because we, we also recognize that there's still that need to continue to seek out ways to address particularly those kids that are on the, on the bubble there more or less that could be proficient, that are just under that. So we, as a, as a challenge to our staff, we need to say, we need to be looking at different ways to address that. With the new environment that we have, we expect to see some changes as well. And I know you as a board would, would want that as well.
In light of those scores, I can tell you that I don't feel many phone calls related to academics, so that's good. The phone doesn't ring about, it hasn't rung the other one, academics, it rings about other things, so.
Sure, you're welcome. Well, there's a built-in expectation, as you all well know, within our community and that's really wonderful to work in. When that expectation is already kind of ingrained in our kids, be it academics, be it athletics, it's kind of ingrained, kids are expected to do well. And it, that speaks highly for our community and our parents, instilling that in their children.
Anything for Mr. Tim? Thank you. Mr. Beer, go.
Yep, I'll try to keep it brief. First, I just want to say that we launched our fall sports, our fall activities on August 3rd, which was our eligibility night. We had a guest speaker, Marshall Behrens. He's a well-known official from Rochester Official Association. Our students sometimes like to say, we want Marshall, well, we had Marshall and he did a fabulous job speaking both with their junior high parents and athletes, as well as with our high school parents and athletes. Big focus on, obviously, his vast experience as an official. He shared some of his personal side, all the years he's been doing, how many nights away? 250-plus nights a year he's away, doing what he loves, which is the positive impact that sports can have on young people and he shared that with him. So thank him very much for attending and that was a great night. Our activities are all in full swing now as well. Fall dance is kind of what launches up first, but then last week, we have football and volleyball start. We have, the numbers are in the report there too, we have 31 volleyball players. I believe we're up to 34 football players now from the high school level. Today is our, and then cross-country also, we have 14 cross-country participants. That is co-op with Lewiston, Lewiston I believe has nine, so we're a little larger than them in the co-op program. And then today was our launch of our junior high volleyball this morning and junior high football this afternoon. Our tentative number is there, we're at 19 for junior high volleyball, 23 for junior high football. Altogether, what that means is 144 student athletes participating this fall. Scrimmage-wise, that's kind of our preseason with volleyball scrimmage tonight, a volleyball scrimmage tomorrow, a football scrimmage on Saturday, and then a junior high football scrimmage next Thursday. But our actual competitive season launches with us hosting a week from today. This place will have that many more new people in here and there'll be our visitors from Lewiston, so. That is our launch of our thing. A little flexibility from our coaches, you know, we're kind of transitioning the move for the practices over here till later this week, but I appreciate obviously their flexibility. But we're very excited to start hosting and not to bring tears to our opponents' eyes, but to, to be able to showcase our, our talent as well as our facility to, for all these different people, so.
Do we need somebody to run the scoreboard? This, I mean, if we have the two scoreboards right now?
It will be a team effort and that is in place, yeah. Whether it was on record or not, but Chris Malone is, is going to be assisting Dave Dolly in that, so. Very excited about what we can bring with our, our new advancements in technology in the gymnasium as well.
I'd like to extend my thanks and appreciation to the coaching staff for being patient with us. You know, our goal was is to have things in place. We were not able to do that from the, from the fitness room, obviously, with the flooring's not here and weight, new weights is not set up. And due to the construction and the cleaning that was necessary on the locker room areas, the coaches have been very understanding, but I want to extend my thanks and appreciation to them publicly and applaud them on being patient with us and so that we can, once we get the green light and that it's the, the construction and everything is completed in that area, as Dan indicated to you, next Monday, we'll be hosting our first volleyball game. So volleyball will be coming here on Thursday for their first practices and get them a little bit comfort level in the new surroundings, so. And by then, we'll have the Kings out of the sound system as well, so we're excited to have that happening. So, but again, I really applaud our coaches for understanding that and being patient with us as we finalize those things.
And our parents, I guess, we could extend that a little bit.
Sure.
Because there were a couple that showed up here that were very appreciative of, you know, the guidance to relocate with our junior high parents. We emailed them last week with the practice plan changes, but we'll be, just one week of transition and we'll be ready to go. But entertaining, any other questions you guys may have on the report as well?
You can use some numbers, Dan, will we be fielding a team in everything? I think you said football was only 19 kids in junior high?
Oh, 23, 23 junior high. I'm finding that, that's a great question. Our plan there is similar to a number of other schools in our area. There are actually some that aren't even fielding a junior high team, some that are very struggling to even have a JV team. We're right on par with that in terms of we're, we're going to go forward with an eighth grade game followed by kind of a mixed seventh and eighth grade. We actually have our, our monthly JV meeting tomorrow, we'll be discussing that with others. But I was actually dialoguing with Josh at Goodview this morning, as well as, I guess, a number of others, Chris at Wilmore Central, they're in a very similar situation, that lower numbers is what they're seeing, but are, created an opportunity, that flexibility of all of them are going to get to compete in that respect. But as far as all levels, volleyball, we'll have a seventh grade team, an eighth grade team, a ninth grade team, a JV team, and a varsity team. Football will have, again, as I just said, kind of the seventh and eighth combined, a JV team and a varsity team.
No ninth?
No ninth grade, we have five ninth graders on the football this year, so that's obviously a challenge. But 33, nine through 12.
Okay, well, thanks. Okay, at this time, you will entertain a motion to close our regular meeting and go to a closed session. And we're only to, to that one.
Hope we make the motion to the courts.
Motion by Hope to a closed session for a second. Fair enough, so please, remember. On the favor, try to say aye.
Aye.